The first 30 minutes of each council meeting reserve for public speaking. I want to remind the members of the public, anybody who wishes to address the council must be a resident and/or taxpayer of the city of Danbury, and you must be interested in the council about an item that is specifically on the agenda this evening. With that, I just want to need members of the public who wishes to speak to the council this evening. Ms. Ervist.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mr. President, leaders, and members of the City Council, good evening. On behalf of Mr. Jay Lent and Union Savings Bank Organization, we thank you for being here this evening. As we have worked diligently over the last several months, and Mr. Mayor, we thank you, and we thank the members of the council for your work in bringing us to this point this evening with regard to this exciting plan. We believe that you will hear this evening from both the attorneys of the Office of Corporation Council and Mr. Ted Backer, that they are in agreement with the language that has been developed and as before you, for your hopefully favorable consideration of this proposal this evening. We can assure you that we will move with all due speed as this year comes to a close, as we are about to begin a new one, to ensure that we bring this project as it has been presented to you to fruition. We are prepared this evening to answer any questions that you may have pertaining to any particulars contained within this agreement of sale, and as a result, we stand ready to address those effectively to hopefully prompt your favorable action this evening. Good afternoon, thanks.
Ms. Ervist, for the record, Ms. Ervist. Forgot the routine, didn't you?
A resident taxpayer of the city of Danbury, also Vice President of Union Savings Bank at 225 Main Street, the City of Danbury.
And home address?
78 Stars Point Road, Danbury, Connecticut.
Any other member of the public wish to address the council this evening?
Hi, I'm Lynn Waller, 83 Highland Avenue, Danbury, Connecticut. I want to thank you all for getting to this point and for the cooperation I have seen from Union Savings. But I got ahold of a copy of the contract of sale, and it may be an old one, it may not have been updated, but it talks about when they're going to close, and that they are on page two, I think, on mine anyway. D, the Connecticut Institute, prior to closing, delivering the city of Danbury's planning site, and they're going to have 46 units, 28 one-bedroom, 18 two-bedroom, thank you for the two-bedroom units, and qualified health facility. I am really concerned with the paragraph on the next page that says "The buyer shall have the right to waive any conditions or contingencies," in this paragraph three, "at its sole discretion, excepting approvals for the requirements obtained by the buyer relating to the State Banking Commission." I am concerned whether this will stay or disappear. We have seen in the past some of the things that Representative Maloney has brought forth to the city, and it's taken quite a while to accomplish these things, and I don't want to see the senior housing fall onto the back burner. I also noticed in the paper today, and it could just be their writing, it says "The Institute officials hope to build a medical center as well as affordable housing for seniors and veterans." And I have a lot of hope, but I don't want to think that they do. What concerns me is if you take this out of the city's hands and we sell it to Union Savings, and I have no complaints about that, that will they carry through with the senior housing? I couldn't find anything in here that forced the issue, and I'm really concerned once it's out of your hands, there'll be no way for us to force the issue, and it will just ride on the back burner and the senior housing will disappear. So keep that in mind as you're approving this. I don't know how you word something to get them to actually follow through, but I have a bad taste in my mouth after the Emmanuel Lutheran debacle. Consequently, well, it is. It's been for years since we had said we were going to put the Head Start kids in there, and it hasn't happened, and I'm sorry, but I think that's wrong. And it's the same group of people that are saying they're going to build senior housing. So just please be careful with it and know that the seniors out here have a real need. So thank you very much.
We'll make sure your answers are answered, or the pending paragraph goes to the next. Mr. Knight.
Good evening. My name is William Knight. I've been in this community. My name is William Knight. My address is 6 Janu Drive, and I come to you, and I've been living in this community for almost all of my life. But I come to you this evening with a few concerns, but I don't think those are concerns that we can all agree with. And I just want to applaud the effort that has taken for us to this point with Union Savings and this Maloney on board with this project. I believe that this project will move forward. But the concern is that, in this climate, where, as we all know, that the politicians who are running for office are all talking about job, job, jobs. So I think with a project like this, I think if you put emphasis on keeping the dollars in Danbury by hiring local contractors, specifically minority contractors, black contractors, we could really make this project win-win for everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Knight, good thoughts. Any other members of the public wish to address the council?
Seeing none of that, we'll move forward. Another announcement.
Mr. Maloney?
Thank you, Your Honor. Ladies and gentlemen, members of the council, thank you for taking the time to study this proposal and to be here tonight on a special evening. I want to thank you for the interest that everyone has shown in the project, and I just thought I would take a moment to respond a little bit to the two prior speakers. Mr. Knight was kind enough to call me today and tell me that he intended to make that presentation. I can't speak for Union Savings Bank, although I know they are very, very good corporate neighbors. I can speak for the Connecticut Institute, and of course, we have every interest and every intention of maximizing local participation in this project. The Connecticut Institute for Communities is a community development corporation. It's a nonprofit corporation precisely for the purpose of improving the communities in which we live, and we want to make sure that to the greatest extent possible, we use local folks, local labor, local contractors, and the like. In regard to Ms. Waller's comment, I would invite Lynn to call me when she has a concern like this, because I would have told her that the Emmanuel Lutheran is not a project of the Connecticut Institute for Communities, it is a school construction project. We have no control over that project. We helped get the money for the project, but it's not our project. It is a school construction project. That said, I would only close by saying that for everything we've done, for everything the Connecticut Institute has done, everything that I've done as a public official, living in the city of Danbury, 15 Worcester Heights, Danbury, Connecticut, I think we moved all of our project timely and to successful inclusion. And if you want to take a look at some of them, go downtown, take a look at the green, take a look at the garage, take a look at all kinds of things that we have successfully made sure happen here in the city of Danbury. So again, I congratulate you and thank you for your hard work. We do hope, and again, this Waller, that's my comment of hope, we can't guarantee, we hope that the City Council will in fact approve this project tonight. If you do, we will build it, and they will come. Thank you very much.
I have to go then. Any other members of the public wish, Mr. Mitchell?
Margaret Mitchell, Park and Main Street, Danbury, Connecticut. I'm a taxpayer. Choosing between having a medical clinic and senior housing and how much of each is like choosing between your two children, they're both so important to the community that it would be nice if everything could go through this plan. But it is just a plan, and so the one phrase that Mrs. Waller alluded to in the contingencies also bothered me, and we didn't read it together, but we came to the same conclusion and wanted to find out more about what under law that phrase actually means, because 46 units of housing wasn't nearly as much as the senior citizens had hoped for. But granted, most of them have some kind of medical coverage now that they're seniors, and younger people are still being terribly impacted by being uninsured or whatever, and we hope that the new clinic can help with some of the other medical needs. Thank you very much for all the work you've done on this thing.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Mr. Ervist?
Thank you, Your Honor. In response to the comments of Mr. Knight, we too can represent on behalf of Union Savings Bank that we will certainly work to maximize and employ local contractors as well as women and minority-owned businesses for this project.
Any other members of the public wish to address the council this evening? Seeing none of that, we'll move on with the regularly scheduled meeting, or excuse me, the special meeting. I don't have any announcements tonight, so we'll go right into item one. Aside from the fact that it's Mr. Sade's birthday and Mr. Seabear's birthday tonight, so we appreciate it. Okay, item one, please.
Contract for sale of surplus property for 6 Fountain Street, 116 and 120 Main Street.
Mr. Mitchell, please, your council. Mr. Cavill.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion that we receive and approve our charter section 3-17, and having satisfied the contingencies set forth at the August 3, 2010, council meeting the contract and sale of city property at 6 Fountain Street, 116 Main Street, and 120 Main Street to Union Savings Bank.
That's related in second by Mr. Trompetta. At this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Backer and Mr. Yaman to give us a primer, a very brief primer, on the contents of the contract, and then if no objection from the council, we'll throw it up in discussion. Mr. Visconti is going to accuse himself, and Mr. Drucker, please reflect on that, please.
For the record, my name is Ted Backer. I am a 25-year resident, a proud resident of the city of Danbury, and I practice law at Kramer &amp; Anderson, U.S. Offices in Danbury and Milford, and parenthetically, in the Holliday School. My son was a proud graduate of Rogers Park and Danbury High School. I'm happy that he did so.
I'm Robert Yaman, lifelong resident of Danbury and Cooperation Council.
What we would both like to do is briefly summarize the contract and then take questions. So the contract price and the contract itself are based on that city of Danbury real estate law basic contract, which the real estate lawyers of Danbury have used, and the format is a format that Attorney Yaman has suggested. So a lot of the boilerplate in the agreement is the standard Danbury residential real estate housing boilerplate, and that has conditions in it for the title being okay when you sell it to us, in other words, you get a good title. For informational purposes, we've already performed a title search. The title is fine. I've given Attorney Yaman a copy of the title search. Union Savings will be putting down a 1% deposit upon signing of the contract, and then seeking to fulfill the contingencies in the contract, which there are a number of them, and I would like to go through those, because those are really the heart of the contract, and they're very important from the city's perspective, and they're very important from Union Savings' perspective. And the first contingency is that the city and Union Savings obtain all the approvals that are necessary from the common council and other agencies. Otherwise, obviously, the contract would not be consummated. The second contingency, Union Savings cannot acquire property of any sort without the permission of the State Banking Commission. So if the State Banking Commission, once this agreement is signed, presuming you approve the execution of it, if the State Banking Commission says, "No, we have to withdraw from the contract," so when this gets executed, we submit it to the State Banking Commission. We anticipate that they will approve it, so that should not be a difficult contingency, but it's a contingency nonetheless that's extremely important, because nothing will happen without their approval. The next critical contingency is that Union Savings, and this is in paragraph 31, that Union Savings receive all municipal approvals to construct an approximately 2,500 square foot bank branch on 116 Main Street and, what's the back street it goes? 6 Fountain Street. So on those two parcels, remember, there are three parcels that are part of this contract, on two of those parcels, Union Savings will be constructing its branch bank building, and I think we can sort of see that over here. That's what we're talking about, in terms of the zoning contingency for the Union Savings Branch Bank. And so let me emphasize one point about that. Like in a regular real estate contract, we need to get all the plans and approvals, the planning commission approval and everything, before we would go ahead and purchase the property. So it will not be conveyed from the city to Union Savings until everything's approved. Another important contingency, less important for the city, but of great significance to Union Savings Bank, and sort of sorry to mention this, but in other words, we have to make sure that the property environmentally is sound, in other words, that there's no leaking tanks under the ground, that there's no asbestos problem, that there's no, and if there is a problem, for example, a possible issue could be led in the basement of the police station from a fire range, we don't know, but we have, like any property you acquire, you send in an environmental consultant, they look at it, they do a report, we evaluate it, and provide it to the city. And so that is another contingency, but it's just for everyone's protection. In other words, if there was some grave environmental problem with the property, which we don't think there is, we would have to reconsider whether we would, you know, close title. But this is information that we share with the city, in other words. So that's another contingency. And then the contingency that everyone is concerned about, and I want to spend just a little bit more detail on it, is the contingency that the Connecticut Institute of Communities, Mr. Maloney, obtain, first he has to deliver to the planning commission plans, site plan approval plans for 120 Main Street property, in other words, the old police station, the actual old police station building. So what we're talking about, the areas. That's 120 Main Street, so what are his obligations? In other words, his obligation is to develop a site plan, submit it to the city planning commission, and then the city planning commission must deliver before we close title, in other words, the properties don't shift over to Union Savings Bank, until the city planning commission delivers a favorable report on that site plan application, so that everyone in the city will know what is being proposed. In other words, when I say will know, the exact site plan of that project for 120 Main Street. So that is another contingency. And I wanted to address specifically Mrs. Waller's comments. So in the prior draft, we had put in a provision where we could waive certain contingencies, and what Attorney Yaman and I, in response to listening to everybody's comments, which are totally legitimate and apropos, Union Savings, in other words, and I'll summarize this, in other words, the property doesn't get transferred until everyone's happy with 120 Main Street. That's sort of the legal summary, but in specific, the legal language is, both the city and Union Savings can choose not to go forward on the whole deal, not just the 120 Main Street, but on the whole package, if you are not satisfied with what is submitted to the planning commission and what the planning commission basically in their report approves. So it gives a fair balance to the entire agreement. And that's what Union Savings Bank wants also. In other words, they do not want to move forward with anything until everybody is satisfied. And so we deleted some things, we put some other items in, and that's sort of the heart of the contract. There are other standard provisions saying that there are no brokers involved, the taxes get portioned upon closing, just like a regular real estate contract. You made certain representations that are basically in a standard real estate contract. For example, you're not aware that there are any oil tanks on the property, but we have to check that. And other standard provisions, and at this point, I can, Attorney, fill in for things that I might have forgotten.
Thank you, Ted. As Attorney Backer pointed out in the beginning of his briefing, we started out with the standard Northern Plateau County real estate contract, of which I was the principal drafter, so I was familiar with this before we started off. And then we added, at the outset, I added paragraphs 37 to 44, all of which are unique to this contract and transaction, all of which benefit and protect the city. If you go through them, you see that. Typically, in a commercial real estate contract and transaction, including one involving a municipality, the contingencies, not surprisingly, favor the buyer. So we reversed that, actually, we shouldn't say reversed that, we modified that, we balanced that. And that's not surprising that in a typical transaction, because the buyer is buying the property, they feel they need to be protected before they spend the money. So virtually all the contingencies in a typical commercial real estate contract, including municipal, one involving, favor the buyer. In this case, we made virtually all of them mutual, especially with respect to the last few changes we made in response to specific comments from various council persons who had specific concerns. For example, we deleted the last sentence of paragraph 44, which stated that the bank was not making any guarantees as to its representations. As Attorney Backer just pointed out, we completely revised paragraph three such that either party can exercise the contingency there. So if we're not happy with the status or the primacy of the results regarding 120 Main Street, we can terminate this contract. You know, in reality, what would happen in that situation would be, we would have the leverage to go back to Union Savings Bank and their partner and say, you know, we have the right to terminate this contract, but we will consider not terminating it if we do A, B, C, D, or whatever, we sit down and negotiate at that point. But in the last analysis, we could cancel, terminate both contract and transaction if we couldn't come up with some solution. So we're pretty much fair to say we're as much in the driver's seat as the bank is. So, you know, it's pretty clear.
Closing date is again?
What's that?
Closing date is?
The first made, the closing date is May 1st.
May 1st, right. Which is a target date.
It's a target.
Which we should be able to, should be able to, depending on due diligence, environmental due diligence and so forth, which they're going to expedite. You know, we're going to monitor that.
Our intention is, as soon as the contract is signed, assuming your approval, we'll be able to accommodate due diligence right away.
Again, I want to emphasize, we addressed four or five very specific concerns, and I think actually some of those in addressing them, I think they made the contract better assumed from the city's perspective.
And some of that came through when you all got the contract last week. Keep a hold on certain provisions that they had concerns with. We tried to respond to those provisions. We didn't want it to, but so we're not just holding the contract in front of you, we're trying to react to the concerns we're sort of, we're all fairly comfortable. And again, as Bob mentioned, some very helpful thoughts that came through the council.
And I can attest to the fact that they made the contract better from our perspective, because, you know, I mean, it dragged, kicking and screaming through the grid, that some of those provisions.
But we're happy with it. Okay, with that, we'll throw it up in the discussion by the council. Any questions from the council, Mr. Mitchell? So, Mr. Sade?
Thank you, Your Honor. Both the attorneys did a good job in summarizing the changes, and the issue of the contingencies was a significant concern to myself and several of the council members. As you're explaining the way the contingencies were changed, and my limited familiarity with real estate contracts, it's almost unprecedented to give the seller the ability to pull the plug. And as I noted down here, that we are in that position where we can pull the plug, and prior to closing, if the plans don't comport with what we as council people wanted to see here. And covering ourselves from other issues where we haven't seen projects go to fruition within the parameters that we thought they would, just want to confirm, the last sentence of paragraph 44 was removed, and that was a concern of not having a guarantee of buyer. And I know through the chair to either council, contingencies 3D, I want to confirm that was altered to remove the requirement that the plan be in compliance with the yet-to-be-published Downtown Renaissance Task Force. That's correct?
Renaissance staff.
Right. The reference to the Renaissance Task Force was deleted. And then finally, the language regarding this, let's say the pull the plug or the ail safe option for the city, that's inserted in the last paragraph of 3D?
Yes, in other words, there are a couple of paragraphs that are inserted, which specifically state that as to 120 Main Street, if it's not satisfactory, the city has a right to, you know, terminate based on the contingency not being fulfilled. And to get into the minor details, that you would give us that notice sort of as soon as you knew, so that we didn't get to the closing table, and then somebody say, oh, you know, really won't.
And that's concerning to correct, if possible.
Right, exactly, yeah.
And addresses the concerns I had, just going back when this project first came up, or at least when it was a publicly debated project, you know, it seems to have a good mix. It doesn't have everything that everybody wants. It doesn't have 100 units of senior and disabled housing, but 46 is a very good start, I think, in this area. In particular, to see that also qualified veterans, particularly the one veterans, may be very appropriate for them, and they're one of the fastest-growing homeless sectors of our society, unfortunately. I have no other questions after those clarifications for now. I think, Mr. Trompetta?
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Corporate Council, hi there again. In regards to the 3C under contingencies, if there is an environmental problem, I know that it's contingent on the buyer seeking the advice of any environmental expert. If there is a problem, who's responsible to remedy that problem? Who pays?
Well, we would be, because if there is a significant problem, that would be unheard, no pun intended, during the due diligence process, they would come back to us and say, "We're not buying the property unless you remedy the problem." So as a practical matter, we would be responsible for it.
Is that a negotiable point, or is that? Sure. I sort of do a lot of this commercial work with environmental properties, and it is a negotiating point. What would happen in fact is, depending on the degree of a problem, in other words, if it's moving, you know, three containers of old material out, and it's a diminutive amount of money, usually they don't even bring it up. If it's a huge problem, then the bank would say, "Wait a minute, we don't really want to purchase the property. Here's the information." If it's a problem that's solvable for a reasonable amount of money, or some amount of money, usually the parties talk among themselves after the licensed environmental professionals, who are the, you know, engineering and the scientific experts get together. But to answer your question specifically, it is a negotiated issue.
Mr. Ervist, question went to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. In a previous administration, and I think Attorney Pinter made the call, we did remove all of the tanks. all of the tanks that were located at one-twenty Main Street, also behind Sixth Mountain Street. All remediation associated with those removals were completed, and completed satisfactorily whereby the properties were given a clean bill of health. Regarding any other potential issues within, contained within the one-twenty Main Street building, that obviously will be determined as part of demolition activity. But as it pertains to groundwater, soils, removal of any underground tanks, all of that, to be my word, I have been in the research.
Thank you. Ms. Van.
Thank you, Your Honor. When this first came to us, it was about the sale of surplus property, and I had the privilege of chairing that committee. And I was able to hear and understand what we were looking at, what we were looking to accomplish with the sale of this property. And we really have, and also our team at Danburyans that we're working with here, so I know that I haven't talked to someone like colleagues, it was some concern as to the ability for this project to be followed through to the degree that we're looking for. And I think that with all the contingencies and the stipulations that have been put in here, I'm confident that it is going to happen. I do have a question, just to clarify my own mind. I know in that first meeting, we had three different phases that we were going to walk through, with phase A, which was the bank, B was the medical center, C was the housing, senior housing. It's now my understanding we have phase A and phase B being, combined the senior housing and the medical center. So that's question one, I just want to clarify the data, it's an A and a B. And also, if for whatever reason we do run into a problem with, for sake of conversation, phase B, the whole deal falls through. Is that correct? In other words, by when the site plans are being submitted, the site plans that are being submitted are going to be for the medical center as well as the senior housing and the bank? Or what are we looking at here?
Let me give a legal answer, and then I'm going to have Mr. Maloney give his answer. The way the contract was constructed, it's exactly as you say, an A and a B. A being the Union Savings Bank branch, and B being one-twenty Main Street. Subsumed within B are two things, the medical center facility and the housing. There is no C. It's A, and so that you have to see a site plan for the medical facility and the housing at the same time. In other words, and the whole thing doesn't close. In other words, Union Savings doesn't buy two of the three pieces, you know, unless you're happy with everything. And that's the balance. In other words, we, and I'm not trying to speak for the bank, they can speak for themselves, but the concept was, this is a partnership, we want people to be happy with the whole product, to the extent that we can do that within the context of this contract. Obviously, and I have to state this for the record, obviously, Union Savings Bank, once it sells the property to Medicaid Institute for Communities, and that's the one-twenty Main Street, we don't have control over them. But within the context of this contract, the submission of the actual plan to the planning commission, so that you can see what's going to be proposed, that's all, as you stated. I'll let Jim, if you want, have another comment.
I just would restate the fundamental point, which is yes. As a result of the committee meeting, we made a decision, based on the feedback, that they would, we would not separate the development of the health center and the housing in the two separate phases. We would go forward in both simultaneously. The only reason they were two phases to begin with is because the financing will be different. The available resources for the development of the health center are very different than the available resources for the development of housing. Okay, two different pots of money, in effect. So that will still be the case, but it is our commitment to go forward with both parts of the one-twenty site simultaneously.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Your Honor. Would it be okay if there was more of a project, general than contract specific?
Sure.
We got everybody here, let me ask a question.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. I took my first breath in Danbury, and I'm not going to take everybody all the way back here, because that was a long time ago. But as I watched this project unfold, and it was on the ad hoc with Councilman Van I, three people kind of stuck out in my mind, and two words kept coming back to me over and over again. And I think some, two and a half months ago, as I said, Mr. Rizzo used the word vision. And he called us, he challenged us to be people of vision. And I've been thinking about that for the last couple of months. And my vision of the city is something where you have little squares and stores and boutiques and little clubs and that kind of thing, where family members, family comes together, and they become a family of community, as opposed to individual families, where they get together at night and they start to exchange. But I see that as two or three or four little squares. But that vision, I don't think can ever happen without quality anchor projects. And when I see this, I keep thinking, this is a quality anchor project that will eventually spread. And perhaps other developers and other businessmen and businesswomen will see this as an opportunity to continue to develop downtown. The other comment came from Mr. Maloney, and that was mix. And I think that's a big word. I know it's only three letters, but it's a big word, to make sure that the right mix comes together to make a project like this viable. And I kind of like the mix that I see here. And the other person, there were sort of three people in two words, but the other person was Mrs. Woller. And she stays on us to make sure that these senior housing units, wherever they're going to be, she stays on that. I hope you'll continue to stay on that, keep after us, keep it on the front burner. So those are just kind of the general comments that I see. And the Union Savings Bank team is just class act. So I'm looking, I'm really hoping that this project will go forward, because I think it can bring a lot into the city of Danbury. Thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Rattler, a second. I'm going to get to Mrs. Teal.
Thanks, Your Honor. I'd like to, first off, echo Councilman Sadi's comments about the hard work of the attorneys in putting this. You know, we got this contract Wednesday evening, and started vetting it Thursday, and immediately found some issues that we had concerns about. Friday, of course, was, the city malls closed, and the weekends, Saturday and Sunday, which brings us to today. So there has been a lot of time between the time we got the contract and voiced our concerns that we got the final revisions, which I probably picked up this evening at five o'clock. Going back to the original motion that was made by Councilman Kabum, the president of the council, this is based on the July ad hoc, the motion essentially required the council to go forward with this project in accordance with the proposal before the ad hoc committee of July twenty-first. And that's a powerful statement, because as the attorneys, the real estate attorneys mentioned, most of the time when a seller disposes of property or buyer, the seller wants one thing, and that's money. This is not the case in the city of Danbury. The city of Danbury wants something else entirely. This motion that President Kabum made could have said something very differently. He could have simply said, we motion that the council, through its attorneys, find the highest value for this property in be done. We could have done two, three, four million, who knows? Probably not, but we could have gone down that road. We know that things are tight, the city, and the state clearly, and the country, and we could have looked at that, but we didn't. We had a higher goal and a more complex goal in mind. And that was to see to fruition the petitioner's proposals for this property, which we feel are important to not only the parcel, but to the larger areas, as had been mentioned this evening. And that doesn't include just a bank, it also includes Congressman Maloney's proposal, and the elderly housing, which I am happy to see has gone from an original unit number of teens all the way up to something now in the mid-forties, and perhaps we can eke out another couple of units too. So the idea was to somehow inculcate that request that the council had into the contract. And we had found on Thursday that some of the language in the contract did not spell that out entirely in black and white. Now, I haven't seen the very final revision, I've seen a draft of the revision, but from what I've been told, and I would request that council reads the actual revision, because this contract that we have here is the one that was delivered Wednesday, not the amended contract. But before, at least I voted this, I would like to have the new paragraph read into the record. But I just want to say that from what I've heard, my issues have been wholly satisfied. I am looking forward to a groundbreaking construction and to a downtown Renaissance. And I just want to commend all the parties, from the ad hoc, to the bank, Congressman Maloney, Anthony Rizzo, everybody who has shared any involvement in this project, and, you know, good luck on this, we need it, we want to see it, and let's go forward. Thank you.
We're just, we have the final language, we can read that paragraph, I believe, Mr. Becker's, I'm trying.
Yes.
I renounce. I, oh, I, and then I think during the public hearing, Ms. Natali, can we make copies of that, so we forget it to the writing? Sorry, Mrs. Teal.
Thank you, Your Honor. Through the chair to Mr. Maloney. I just know that different funding has different timetables, and will your funding's timetable fall into the timetable of the contract?
The good news I can report is that Friday, the bond commission did approve, the state bond commission did approve the first $600,000, which, and you may have written a paper, there's some dispute about the bond commission's meeting and all of that, but we're pretty clear that we got six votes, which is a majority.
Six to, I checked.
Right, six to, right. The, which is a majority of bond commissions. Some of the other matters may not have passed, but we believe ours did. And that will give us enough money both to serve as a down payment and to pay some of the development costs to get the ball rolling. So we're ready to move right away. Now, having said that, that gets us through the planning commission, through the closing of the property. Then there will be a need for substantial additional money to both develop the health center and develop the housing. And as I was mentioning Nero's comment, the sources of that funding is very different. Housing money is available through HUD, through the Department of Economic and Community Development. Health center money tends to be available through the Department of Health and Human Services, and at the state level through the Department of Social Services. So there are lots of more pieces of the puzzle that come together. But all I can tell you is that I know where all those pieces are, and just like I went after the money for the parking garage, or went after the money for the green, or went after the money for a dozen other things, we'll go after that money too. And I can't speak for the bank, but the bank said to me to mention this point, there are partners in this in a couple of ways. They're not just the intermediary in terms of the transaction, they've come to the table saying, we're with you, we're going to help you with this project and provide financial support for the project as well. So we believe in good faith. I mean, that's all we can say. We're here in good faith, in good faith, we believe this is going to happen, we believe we know how to make it happen, we believe we have the first pieces of the puzzle already in place, and we're going to take it from there.
Sure, Mrs. Teal.
But there isn't a date when your funding will expire. I guess that was my.
No, ma'am, there is no date whose funding will expire.
Mr. Rattler.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we all know, these are very dire economically stressed times, and I really truly feel that this project will eventually become a model for the rest of the state. My feelings, as being at most of them, matter of fact, of all the different meetings held here at City Hall, I can say that I'm extremely happy with the project. One has to just look at your senior housing, forty-four, forty-six units, that's a win-win. If you take a look at your medical center, that in itself is a winner. But I think that we also have to consider the number of new hires that will be brought into the picture, so to speak. And you will eventually see that many of these new hires are on the upper level in terms of earning power. And consequently, these people will bring about a better cash flow for downtown Danbury, which is a positive thing too. So I just want to say I'm extremely pleased, I'm extremely happy that after eight years on this esteemed council, I feel that all of you, Mayor Bowden, and all my peers, and certainly anybody and everybody concerned with this project, you are to be praised immensely for your efforts. So I say to you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Any other discussions relating to this? Mr. Kabum?
Your Honor, through the chair to Mr. Becker, Mr. Yen, I heard Mr. Trumpett's concerns, and I just want to be clear for the record that if we were not selling this property, you were saying it was contaminated, it would still be our responsibility.
Oh, absolutely. We own the property right now. We don't, I mean, if there's something there we're not aware of, it's our problem.
But my law, we can't sell a piece of property that's contaminated, that we know is contaminated. Can't allow you to do this.
That's correct. All representations in here are only to the best of our knowledge and belief. I also put a provision in here that they don't, they're not guarantees, and they don't survive closing. But in general, I mean, in terms of environmental law, I mean, it's certainly our problem. So we're not, if anything, we're alleviating the problem because we have a buyer.
Just to tell that.
Yeah, if it's a minor problem, we probably wouldn't even agree to remediate it, just to tell them.
That's between us.
And if it's a major problem, it's negotiated, but we'd at least have a partner. We'd be, now we know we're sorry, we'd be better off than we are, and then we'd have a partner that would at least potentially be able to share the cost with us. So, you know, that's not, and the environmental issues aren't as negative, they're really positive in this context. We look at that.
I would concur with what Attorney.
Thank you. Well, I would have to say that, you know, I've, we've followed this very closely through, and I have to agree with Mr. Sadi and some of the other council people that are here with us tonight, that my concerns, Mr. Rattler, my concerns have been mediated. I had the problem with the same clause as Mrs. Woller, Mrs. Mitchell, and Mr. Sadi, and I think Mr. Rattler, and most of us have, and it has been moved, and I'm satisfied and happy to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kabum. Any other discussion?
Seeing none, then let's try your minds. All in favor of entering in the contracts, and if not, by saying aye.
Aye.
Before we figure that paragraph.
Oh, I had to pause, now I got to read the paragraph. No, no, I'll read. This is the new, yeah, this is, you don't have to, it's an addition to paragraph three D. And this sort of says and leaves what I summarized before. "In the event the contingencies set forth in paragraph three A and three D herein, as relates to the contingencies with respect to the site plan application for one-hundred-and-twenty Main Street parcel, are not satisfied," and then here's the key words, "in the seller's sole and absolute discretion. Then seller shall give written notice to buyer of the inability of the contingencies to be satisfied, and specifying the contingency which will not be able to be satisfied, whereupon the seller shall return to buyer the deposit of $23,000, and this agreement shall be deemed null and void, and neither party shall have rights against the other." And then it goes on further. It says, "seller shall notify buyer with respect to the here and above, within ten business days of the approval set forth in paragraph three A and three D having been obtained." And that goes to the point that I don't want to get to the closing table when everybody says, oh, you know, thanks a lot, and I'm closing. Then there's a further, a further provision which balances this out. And that was an addition on the language which was in the contract, which basically indicates that Union Savings can waive any provision in the contract if it sees fit. We're not waive any provision, waive any contingency in paragraph three, I don't know if I spoke there. But then we added this language. It says, and I'm going to read the whole thing, so everybody has the whole paragraph. And I'll tell you the new language and the old language. The old language is, the buyer shall have the right to waive any condition or contingency in this paragraph three, it's only paragraph three, in its sole discretion, excepting approvals that are required to be obtained. approvals that are required to be obtained by buyer relating to the State Banking Commission approval." And then here's the new language. "And also accepting any waiver of the conditions under contingencies set forth in paragraph three A and three D herein, as it relates to the site plan application for one-hundred-and-twenty Main Street parcel," and this is the big point, "unless said waiver is mutually agreed upon by buyer and seller."
So what that means is?
I think we got it, Bob. Oh. Appreciate it. Appreciate the thoughts, but I think that pretty much sums everything up. So I actually just want to congratulate Bob and Tana, I'm really tightening this thing up, and the council people, it's kind of time calling, and go going through this, we define it to the column. You made a better product, so congratulations to them. Okay, so we did the ayes and any nays. Seeing now then, the motion carries twenty and zero. At this time, I'd take motion to return. Second, Mr. Sadie, all in favor, turn it.
Aye.
Turn it.